Call the meeting to order at 6:35. And the first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on November 13.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Should've done that as the agenda, but let's go through the agenda and we'll add. The next item is to discuss the State of Connecticut Department of Education Minimum Budget, or MBR, requirements for the Deep River Elementary School. We got a letter that was addressed to Dr. Levy, beginning of the month, stating that the reductions that we made, and it's not strictly the elementary school, it is actually all of our education budget, but that we made too much of a reduction in the budget, and we need to repay to the Board of, either add monies back to the Board of Education budget for 2018-19, or we will reduce our ECS grant to basically, basically double that for the next year and moving forward. It boils down to a $68,487 shortfall, and they would reduce the ECS grant to 136,974. I've spent some time on the phone with Kathy Dempsey, who's the Chief Financial Officer of the Department of Education, also Kevin Chambers, who's their, who's assigned to Deep River, I guess. He was very helpful, answered a few questions. There are quite a few more questions that we're gonna have to ask. The biggest concern that I had, and that's why it's on today's agenda, and that's why Dr. Levy's gonna come to the Board of Finance meeting to answer these questions, is because the letter very clearly stated that if you were not applying for the savings deduction, you had to have this taken up by January 1st. In order to do that, we would have to have had a town meeting and all that kind of thing. After the phone today, we simply have to tell them, indicate to them that we are addressing the situation. We have until July 1st to actually do anything. I don't think, I don't think we are gonna wait that long, but it gives us breathing room and discussion, more conversation with them. I still have a lot of questions. We didn't cut any programs, which is part of what the statute is. We didn't cut back on anything except for cost, and most of that savings was through changing of teacher salaries. You know, teachers retired, replaced with less, with less cost. And that, to me, in my interpretation of the statutes, falls into, into that place, where we should be able to save there. It's an efficiency, not a cut to programs.
They're penalizing us for doing our due diligence.
That's what it smells like.
It's not, you said, we aren't cutting any programs, we haven't cut any staff.
Mm-hmm.
We've worked, we've done our due diligence, and we're elected for as town officials to save the town money.
Yep.
And still give our children a good education, and I feel that we've done both, and we're getting penalized for it. When the letter came out, I was very upset, and I'm still upset.
Yeah, likewise.
I think with our newly elected officials, that we just elected Norm and Christine, I think that should be on their docket to work and fight on our behalf for our community here.
It already is. They are aware of this, they will be up there, and we've tried, this is not the first time that this has come up. Towns have gone up against the state on this time, you know, year after year after year. Chester, I think, was a couple of years ago, they did this. And there was an effort last year to change the statute. We actually thought it was going to be successful for a little while, but it never came out of committee, I don't think.
You said, you mentioned there, that if we don't pay it back, they'll deduct it off of next year's cost grant?
The forfeiture would be deducted from the district's 2021 ECS grant, so that'd be next year's grant.
So my question to Dr. Levy tonight would be, if we don't pay it back, can we make do without that extra $68,000?
It won't be $68,000, it'll be $137,000. Can we make out without that?
They roll and keeps going down?
That's an interesting question.
Okay, you know, why are we being so dependent on that money? Can we make do without, I guess, my question?
Well, it's a big part of our, it's a big part of us, you know, right now, we're collecting, I think, a million 500,000.
But can we make do without $130,000?
And my related question is, what are they unable to do without that additional funds?
You gotta be careful, and I'm not sure, I'm learning this on the fly right now, but...
Yeah, well, we all are.
My first response to that is, if you get, if you do that, then the next year, you're reducing it again.
Another 68.
And then it's gonna just keep on dropping and dropping and dropping. And I think the ECS grant will keep on dropping and dropping and dropping. Right now, the formula for Deep Rivers ECS grant is, is going up. And like you say, I don't like being dependent on it. We talked about that during the last two budget seasons. At the same time, that's a million and a half dollars, and increasing, that goes directly to education. And that's what, that's what the discussion today came down to, is that the grant increased, all of that money has to be spent on education. It certainly was, and more. But we had a total budget of $1,879,000 that went into K through 12. The part that, and that is an increase over last year's, but once you subtract the debt redemption of 500 and...
580 or something.
568,000, it puts us down below. Now, they do have, we are allowed, what we are allowed to reduce our budget last year was 31,833,000. We reduced it by about 100, which is where they come up with the 68. I just really wanted to bring this on the table today, talk about it. We'll talk about it more with the Board of Finance tonight.
Good.
Dr. Levy will be here to answer any questions from the school side of it. I will be able to answer only a few questions about what I learned in the last couple of days, and we will, we'll continue to discuss, and I think we'll put a group together of Dr. Levy, me, Bud, either of you, if you're interested in being there and available to be in there, and Paula Weglars, who's our chairman of our Deep River Elementary Board of Education. And we will discuss with the state how they came up with this formula. They've got it all defined here. I'm expecting more emails from them with a little more explanation as to what this formula is, but, you know, I see two things here, that there's, we're not giving any credit for savings realized through efficiencies. What I need to have from them is how do they define efficiencies? Because to me, if you can still provide a teacher, a teacher that's certified by the State of Connecticut for less money, that's inefficiency.
That's efficiency.
So, I, it's an ongoing discussion.
What did Chester, not to go off the subject, but what did they do a couple of years ago?
They gave them back.
They gave them back?
I say they gave them back the money, they put the money back into their budget. Now, we've had, part of this conversation is, that I've had with Dr. Levy and Paula, is that, you know, there are expenditures that we've talked about in the last month that we have to do, we're gonna be making on the school anyway. So some of that money should be able to be funneled towards that. One of the things that we haven't talked that much about is the study on school safety that we just went through with all of the schools in the region. And one of the things that I know is going to be recommended for the town of Deep River, and in fact, it's been suggested to me for the last three years, is that we enhance the security at the entrance to the elementary school, and they build, by building something called a man trap. I think this money can go towards that, so it basically makes the entrance, so you go in and you're locked in, and you're not locked out. You can't go anywhere until you're buzzed in. And in order to do that, you have to provide identification, all that kind of thing. I think it's in, something like that is in all of the other schools anyway.
Didn't they have, didn't they have new key fob slasher that wasn't on their budget?
That was on, that's what they've requested. I'm reluctant to encourage that, it could go towards that, we don't need that. The fob system there works fine, it's been studied, it works fine, the whole reason for the fob system is more, so they don't have to carry, the people that work in both schools don't have to carry two keys.
Okay.
And that's, that's what's been explained to me anyway. I think there are, there's plenty of things we can do with the money. The thing we have to pay attention to is that the money is not ours per se, once that goes back into the Board of Education budget, it's the Board of Education's money to spend.
And that's the scary part.
And that's, it needs to go to education, and hopefully, school safety and things like that will be a part of that budget. So we'll talk, we'll continue the conversation later on, not as part of Board of Selectment, but part of the Board of Finance.
Sure.
So it's just FYI. I think I, did I email both of you guys this letter, right?
Yes, you did.
So you've got that, all, any correspondence I get, I'll send to you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is appointments. I think you all did some, made some appointments last time, we have some more that needs to go on there. The Design Advisory Board, we're going to have a vacancy on that as a result, we're only, only two of the existing folks wanted to go back on there.
Okay.
That's Daniel Blatt and Jeff Hostiler. Housing Authority, we've got Thomas Howesworth, I don't think there are any vacancies on that. Parking Rec, we've got a lot of vacancies on, so we only have two folks that want to be reappointed, Kevin Crosby and Brandon Woodcock. Planning and Zoning Commission, we've got three folks that are on there, Anthony Bullock, Bruce Edgerton, Krista Rochers. We do have a vacancy, I believe, as an alternate?
Yeah.
Yep. On that, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, Ed Judge, Charles Rayner, and Lenore Kuhn, all have asked to be reappointed. Interestingly enough, Charles Rayner has been on that committee for 25 years or something like that, he's been on a long time. So unless you have any questions or thoughts, these are all reappointments. I would certainly entertain a motion to reappoint.
I'd like to make a motion to put the list I was read off for appointments for their term to expire.
Any second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The one thing I'd like to ask, if we can get it added to the agenda, if someone would make a motion, is discussion and action on the refund requests from our tax collector.
Make a motion, we add that to the agenda.
Thank you, Bill.
Second?
What happens every year, we have to send back money for people that their taxes have either been adjusted, they sent in too much money. Occasionally, there may be an error, most of the time, though, it's really just an adjustment or an abatement for that takes place for something. We've got a number of repayments that we, are listed here to make refund requests that have been made. These need to come through the Selectments Board, and then I'd sign it and send it back to them. It totals, this, this time right now, it totals $7,496,067. It's really just one larger property that's part of, part of a mortgage. So I would ask that we get a motion to approve the requested refund that came through the tax collector's office, and authorize me to sign these, each of these requests, and capable of got a check for folks. This is a pretty common thing, we have, it hasn't come through the Board of Selectment's office for a while, but it's something that needs, needs to take place. So we're gonna probably see more and more of these as time goes on.
I'd like to make a motion for the list for the refund for tax credits, or tax overpayments that was provided to us tonight. An amount of $7,000.
$7,496,067. That actually is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven different, seven different checks, six different checks to seven different people.
Any second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there any, are there any questions from the audience of citizens? Jonathan?
It seems to me that Chester Elementary, I'm not sure if it works, there is a, I believe there is a provision for a waiver. Chester, two or three years ago, had such a drop in their, in their student body that they just, it was the same thing, nothing was cut, but the ratio of money spent on all the programs, if you followed the state's rules, it would've overfunded the school. Now, I don't know if they, if they were able to get a ruling on that, I don't know.
My understanding is that they were unsuccessful in that request.
So the state is saying, if we don't give them a $68,000 this year?
Yep.
Or go the other way, if we give them the $68,000, do they have to spend it?
Do they have to spend it?
I mean, is it...
I would, I would guess not, and that's a good question, Jonathan, because they did in fact give us a sizable chunk of money back at the end of the last school year, the money that they didn't spend.
So they gave us money back, and partly because of that, we funded them less this year?
Mm-hmm.
So we got money back, plus we saved $68,000.
Mm-hmm.
Now, the state doesn't mind them giving the money back, but we just have to...
Those are questions that I'm, I have answered, I'm not sure how that, what kind of impact that makes. I mean, do we, we simply give them the money and then get it back at the end of the year? I damn, I don't, that doesn't make any sense, because then we're taxing, we're taxing for that.
You're talking about a bureaucracy here, it doesn't make sense.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly...
You gotta rule, the rule is you gotta get some money, if they need it, they give it back, and then you give it back.
That's right, and this is, this is something that most of the towns, certainly the Council of Government has been working on, all of the regional school systems have been meeting with them, are working on how we can make this law, if we can somehow affect a law that allows for this to take place. The problem being thus far is the lobbies from the cities have been much stronger than the lobbies from the small towns. And this law is in effect, I believe, more to take care of the inner-city schools than to take care of communities like ours. But the law doesn't have any wiggle room for population or anything like that, it is, this is the formula, formula changes every year, this is what you're allowed to reduce your budget by. No, it's, it's very frustrating, and you can see that in all of ours, we're all a little...
If the city's schools are underfunded, and we're overfunded, let's take half of that 68, and put it in the pool for the cities, who probably do need it, and not give it back.
Jonathan, be careful with that, because that's what they, that's what they started two years ago.
Well, but I'm just trying to, you make a formula, and you said it is a formula.
Yeah. It's a formula that needs to be looked at. The town, the population in towns is dropping.
Everywhere.
Everywhere.
They're gonna have to deal with this, every school district is gonna come up with this.
Yep. And we'll, we'll do our best, we're planning on going up to Hartford with Ruth and Norm and Lauren to argue about these kind of, these kind of things. It's directly affected two of the three towns now. I'm not done arguing that we should not have to do this, but I think that any way we look at it, if we, if we, if we end up saying, no, we're not going to put that money in, we are going to see a reduction in our, in our ECS funding, I don't think there's any question about that.
So, but I love that.
So whether or not we can, we can withstand that reduction is, is one of the questions that we need to answer.
So to punish up for spending less, they're gonna take more of their funding away in addition to the money needed to spend?
They double it.
So then what happens?
But they don't double it, they don't double it until the 2021 year. You know, so next year's ECS fund, funding will stay the same, or go up or down, whatever it does, but it won't be, it will not address this. This doesn't get done until 2021, so...
Oh, by which time, if we bought some lottery tickets or something, maybe we could just pay it all back and...
And we'll have more conversation about this with the Board of Finance here, so, and we'll have more, we'll have more amongst ourselves, so...
It's been enough for me, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Just news, we've been out, we had our first snowstorm, the crew did okay, although they did not use the new truck. I just found out that we did not, the plow didn't come with that, so, it was ordered and paid for, but somehow or another, didn't come down. So the plow is up there, the truck is up there now getting its plow put up.
Excellent.
So we'll be ready for any other storms that come in. We've been cutting down, we're probably about halfway through with cutting of the dead trees, and the reports from James is, thank God, we're cutting them, they're dangerous as can be, and the tops of these trees are coming down, and they're turning into, you know, 12 inches, so, that's, that's taking place. We, I think you talked about the curbing last time, we're gonna be out Monday and Tuesday putting in about 500 feet of curbing around town that's been damaged. We have, we're doing the stuff that is really functioning, needs to be done right now, we'll get more in the spring at the end of the winter. We are pulling the town docks pretty soon, sometime in the next week or so. The moorings are going to be, I think anyone who has a mooring probably already knows this, and by the time they see this, the moorings will be pulled, but what else is going on? The roof, we just fixed the leak in the roof, that was finished today, we'll address another section of that in the springtime.
This building or?
Elementary school.
Building.
Yep, I appreciate the efforts by Christian to accommodate the equipment that was necessary to get on the roof. During the, we tried to do that during the Thanksgiving break, but they were unable to, just due to weather, they were not able to get it done until today, so... And that's all the news from, this will be gone, Steve. So if there's nothing else, we'll take a motion to adjourn. Make a motion, adjourn the meeting.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good evening, this is the Deep River Board of Finance Regular Meeting for November. On the agenda is nomination and vote of officers, which we have traditionally done the month of the election. Ironically, none of us have, are new to the test, but it is worthy of revisiting these things, okay? How does anyone wish to proceed?
May I make a nomination?
Maybe you should make a nomination.
I nominate George Bud Ekinroth as chairman, and Lori Garret is vice chair and secretary.
I second the nomination.
Second the nomination?
I third the nomination.
Third the nomination. While not in history, I have this speech to make. Well, we should vote on this, okay, nomination's one thing.
We have to close nominations.
Close the nominations, okay, do we have to vote on closing the nomination, or just close it?
Are any other nominations?
Do we nominate the vice chairman at this point, or do we?
You can do it as...
Russell sort of just suggested that we accept the entire field as currently sitting, so...
I nominated Lori as vice chair and secretary.
Entire slate.
Entire slate.
I second, I didn't hear.
You did.
That's okay.
Correct.
You can, you can...
But I would've done it anyway.
I know you would have.
So that's all right.
All in favor of accepting the nominations as put forth and voted on, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Approval of the regular meeting, oh, no, well, yeah, the rest of the meeting?
My other husband might have done.
You have so many.
Now, we're so linked together as chairman and vice chairman.
I've got two other husbands, what are we doing here?
I'm reading your minutes, why are you correcting me?
Because we have to vote on that, we voted to close nominations, now we have to vote on the nomination.
Oh, I thought we just did that.
Okay.
I am adjourning, Bill, I'm not listening, or not hearing.
There we go, we're all set.
There's a big discussion in my house, whether I don't hear or I don't listen. I'm not sure which one I come out that or...
Or both.
That starts just before you realize you don't have a hand here.
All right, Ms. Lori, you would like to say what? You want us to vote on the nominations as put forth?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All those in favor of accepting the slate as proposed by Russ, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, we go to the approval of the regular minutes of October.
And special minutes of October. Because we had the special meeting at the fire station just to...
Very good, very good, we had a special, correct.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Conceptually, Lori, you should take it over now, we are doing housekeeping things. Do you wish to talk about next year's minutes?
Yes, okay, hold on just a second, I just need to, um, and, just a second. The schedule for next year, since we will not be having a meeting in December, the holiday, unless we need a special meeting, the fourth Tuesday of every month, except August, and March and April, Tuesdays at 7:00 for the workshop.
Tuesdays at 7:00, okay.
And I will send out that in writing, but approve that?
I have no problem with that.
Okay, so I will send that out.
Sounds like it would work.
That's the same schedule we keep now?
Yeah, same as last year.
No change?
Same as the last 30 years.
Make it, make it work.
Well, other than the workshops, yeah, okay, so...
Well, there was a mysterious period of time when we did workshops on Wednesdays.
Right.
And no one can ever tell me why, we switched, I assume someone had a conflict, and the rest of us just lived under that conflict forever. All right, Tuesdays, 7:00 for the workshop, 7:30 for our meetings.
Yep.
Yep. Do you need to vote on it?
No, just...
Are you sure? That's great.
I could look at last year and see if we voted on it.
Only because I don't want, I don't want the town clerk to come back and say it wasn't voted on.
Okay, to make a vote, because I have to look back and find if...
It cannot harm, everyone seems to be nodding, so...
Do it by motion, and then if it's, then it's a non-adjourn.
I make motion to accept the meeting schedule as proposed by Lori just a moment ago.
Second.
Good.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are carried, okay.
All right.
We're overvoting.
Overvoting, yes, this is a thing.
Moving along.
Once you start, you don't wanna stop. Audience of citizens, seeing none, hearing none, I will move to the next agenda item.
We're gonna skip to Ruth, I thought?
What's that?
We're gonna skip to Ruth, and that way she can, doesn't have to...
Oh, well, I'll tell you what, let me, let me, let me keep up, because I doubt where these will take a long time. Audience of citizens, we will skip. Treasury report, Tommy?
Yeah, sure, everyone has the composite report in front of them. We have over $3 million to carry us through to the end of the year, so we're... We did receive our ECS monies, education cost sharing monies, October 31st, $417,583. I was talking to Kathy today, we did receive a pilot grant that was applied for through the assessor's office, it was wired into the general fund for $7,424. We do have two USDA loan sewer payments that are due in December, that's for the Kirtland and River Street projects, so, one is due, actually, they're both due on the same day, December 17th, one for $118,379, another one for $5,858. This is the third payment that we'll be making out of a 40... This is the third payment that we'll be making out of 40, 40 years on both of those, the term is 40 years.
I don't want to be destructive, we have a sewer payment for $5,000?
No, this is a, this is an annual, this is the, from the sewer, there's like two loans.
Yes.
From this USDA. So there's one that we're paying a principal payment of $118,379. And the other, we pay another, another $5,858. So there's, there's two, two loans that are due, always due in December. They're 40.
That throws me off, and you're, well, throws me off, we borrow millions of dollars, we pay back $5,000 each year.
Forty-year terms, so they don't actually mature until 2055.
But I'll still be chairman.
We'll still be running races on Thanksgiving.
Made three wire transfers from People's United Bank, the old, actually, it used to be Farmington Bank, to Citizens Bank, to our general fund. For a million, 100,000, made one on October 24th for 400,000, another one for 200,000 on November 13th, and another for 500,000 on November 16th. And if you look on the bottom of this page, you'll see where our total deposits are, and you'll see where we were, actually, last year at this time, where we had 3,382,000. And our total deposits this year, we have 4,561,000. And you'll see that we decreased by about a million, a million dollars from last month to this month. That's all I have.
So $3 million, school gets about a million a year, ten months, is my quick rounding. We've got sewer payments of, what, 200,000, something like that? Angus, do we have any big payments outstanding for your trucks or anything like that? Three sound.
We have, we have got another smaller truck that will be about, somewhere in the vicinity of 50,000, 40, 45 to 50,000. That's, right now, we're deciding between a Ford and a GMC, but we'll have that, we'll have that pretty quickly.
And dollars begin to come in December. It was last year at this time, we had, we were seeking authority to block, okay, to block, so.
Yes, I do.
Life is good. All right. Let's go to recommendations of selectmen, Angus, do you wish to take over?
I think the only thing, the bigger thing to talk about tonight, now that we have Kimberly and Dr. Ruth here, would be to go straight to the letter that we received from the State Board of Education that was addressed to Dr. Levy regarding the MBR. And we talked about it briefly at the Board of Selectmen's meeting. The first and foremost, you'll see in the letter that I forwarded to you, January 1st date on here, we were able to determine from two different fronts that we don't need to take any action by January 1st, we just need to send, or small action that we have to take is to send a letter to them saying that we are addressing the situation. We have until the end of June to actually make any changes in funding. At least that's been, that's what was explained to me. So we don't need to make any decisions tonight, I think it's really just to get everyone up to speed as to where we sit with the state, with our MBR, and to answer the questions that we can, that you might have. I think I can answer a few, not too many, I'm learning pretty quickly, just on a couple of, or trying to learn as quickly as I can. But I had a bunch of questions this morning, a few of those were answered, I got emails coming in with more answers. Dr. Ruth and Kim have both also been on the case with the state and can answer probably a lot more than I can, which is why they're here today, so. It boils down to a reduction in our, in our budget, we were all very happy with our elementary school budget that came in last year, and it was a good reduction. Our overall education spending still went up, but the reduction in the Deep River Elementary School was, brought everything down to a level that was too low, based on the state's formula for MBR. It boils down to a $68,000 payment that we need to put back into the Board of Education budget. If we don't choose not to do that, then there will be a $136,000 reduction in our ECS money from 2021 season. That's part of what I'm learning, is how does that, does that continue, or is that a one-time? I don't know the answers to this.
If you do not take any action and choose not to do it, then you could be subject for a dollar, two-dollar penalty, which would bring you up to that, that fund. Perhaps this might be a good time for Kim and I to, to go through this. We're going to send around to you the actual law for MBR, and I am going to look to Kim to maybe talk about the ins and outs of why this happened. This happened, by the way, several years ago in Chester, if you might remember, and we were having conversations at that time, because their enrollment declined very quickly, and so did their budget, and we made those cuts commensurate with what we needed, same as what we were doing in Deep River, only now Deep River is declining in enrollment with, with Chester has stabilized out with their enrollment decline. So, Kim, if you could maybe explain MBR and how they reached that calculation that we were below that minimum level?
MBR basically is the minimum budget requirement that a town is required to spend on education. In general terms, they expect to see from year to year the same level of funding. The quick formula that they utilize is they take your per pupil cost, 50% of that times the number of students that you, enrollment went down, is generally the credit you receive, so you can reduce your budget by that amount. You know, for example, $10,000 times five students, so you can reduce your new year budget by that $50,000. That's the easiest formula. We did not see this coming, we discussed it briefly during the budget workshops that, you know, we were looking at it. But because of the budget problems at the state last year, they were actually looking at removing the MBR requirement for school districts. And they were moving forward on that, and it wasn't until May that they decided they were not going to remove it, and they were gonna leave it intact, which left many school districts that are facing enrollment in this predicament. Because we did not foresee it, we were expecting that they were gonna do away with the requirement, and we would be able to reduce the budget accordingly. And in May, after our budget was already approved, they changed their minds and did not do that. They, your MBR also includes not only Deep River Elementary, but Region Four as well. But in your Region Four figures, they take out any capital, any debt service, so it's only the figures that are directly related to students. So that budget is lowered by all of that reduction as well, when they calculate what you have to have in your budget.
It's a difficult formula, it's a difficult law, it's riddled with issues. One of the issues is that, you know, if one size fits all jeans, or something that worked, it would be wonderful. Unfortunately, we have different towns, and different towns have different needs. MBR is most highly supported by our urban school districts and our larger school districts. And it was instituted to make sure that children and schools were being funded. That's not the case in small towns like ours. It's also, and I say one size fits all jeans, because it's one law across all of Connecticut. But our small towns are very cognizant of the needs of our children in the small towns. And the cuts that we have made together and consistently have been made because of declining enrollment, and have been done thoughtfully without hurting programs for students, and without hurting the ability of our teachers to be able to have the resources they need to be able to do the jobs that they are. In our case, the law is actually harming us rather than being there to protect us. So it leaves us with, you know, a number of things to consider in doing this, and you know, we, we need to be cognizant of the law, one of the things that I certainly will be doing, that I have done in years past, is to talk about this legislation during testimony, and this is, you know, long season from the state legislature. And certainly, I'll be up there again to do it, but more specifically now to talk about a situation that's harming our towns and impacting all of us. We're the school, we're here to support you, you've supported us, and we want to be able to work together to make any changes that we can. The law does allow for a waiver, and I know that Angus has spoken with the state, Kim has spoken with the state. I've spoken with Shipman and Goodwin, our counsel, to, to get some guidance, and even when Chester went through this several years ago, we looked at that word waiver and said, that's us, we're an exception. Our students are doing well, they're getting what they need, we fit into that category of being an exception, which I, I think is synonymous with the word waiver that they use. Chester was not able to get a waiver at that time, but there was a change in commissioners, there was a change in, in the State Board of Education. Since that time, and last year, when they were actually thinking of completely dismissing this bill, I think that they are looking toward at least making some alterations in the bill. So this may be a time for us to say, we should be considered for a waiver. It has never, ever been granted before, but that doesn't mean that we can't be the first to move forward and say, please grant us a waiver. So, so that is an option. If that waiver is not granted, then they are going to require action by the town to put the money back into the school budget before June 30th. That's a lot to digest, and it's pretty confusing.
Now, there's additional tension coming, lack of, from the other side. That hopefully calms everybody's tension. When I attempted to understand the formula, the fact that we received incremental funding last year, that incremental is added back in $78,000, correct?
I don't know, I don't know.
And that raises the number we're comparing against.
Yes, it's, and it's not a clear-cut formula, when they look at you, they're not gonna give you X plus Y equals C. It seems to change, but when you look at their figures, that is correct, on how they.
So the fact that we got, we certainly had gotten more than we budgeted for. And we were rather gleeful that we got approximately 78 more, except it's now being added back into that formula.
Correct.
Yep. The formula, as explained to me, that formula changes annually.
Right. Yes.
The numbers changing, or the actual formula changing?
Formula changes.
Formula changes.
Formula changes.
They said it every year, and it's generally not until the end of the April or May, so it's difficult during budget season.
It's impossible, it's impossible for us during, during budget preparation, to, to, to know what that's going to be.
Oh, you mean the funding. The other frustrating thing is, it starts with the top two lines, my attempt to understand, lest the formulas attached to the letters, and you, first three lines take last year's appropriated, approved, and then picks the higher of the two.
And then the year before's.
Yes, then there's another, we actually can go back a year earlier to grab another number in there.
And enrollment is the year before that.
But the one that, the fact that the elementary school gave us back, or alternatively, say, did not spend their approved budget, is not reflected in that formula.
It is not.
Reflecting the money that was giving back would solve our problem.
Right, but that's not considered in their formula, correct?
The danger, I mean, no one needs me to say this, is we could get ourselves caught in a loop.
Yep.
So to catch up to what we didn't spend last year, although they gave it back, this is like Three Stooges back there, no, I gotta get my comedians right, Abbott Costello. I gotta get my comedians correct, gotta get dignity where, but you could give, we'll give them money, which will be caught in this year's budget, we'll never get out of this loop, that's the key, I'm not gonna get into it. But you'll never get out of this loop unless something's changed.
So this lack of compliance on our part, I guess our district's part, is this, is this taken into account, this reductions of MBR that's permissible, one and a half for 3%?
Yes.
Is that outside of that?
They do, they give us that as a credit, correct?
They do, okay. Are we the one and a half, or are we the three?
We were granted $31,800.
He was on the low end because of our enrollment was not steep, and when I spoke to them, I tried using, because we had a larger enrollment drop this year. And he said that will be help you next year, but it doesn't help you with this year's.
The formulas seem to be a little bit, I can, I can attempt to duplicate it, but anybody can duplicate it. You take the total budget they recognize, divided by the number of students that you have. You then multiply that per student number times the decline in enrollment, reduce that by 50%, and that is the reduction that you're allowed to recognize. So there's a recognition that we have fewer students, that does not give us the much wage.
But they're using this year's and last year's budgets, but they're using the enrollment figure from the year before.
Oh, oh.
That was, that was what we had talked about, where they're using last year's.
They use last year's enrollment?
But the enrollment is actually 16, 17.
So that doesn't make sense.
It's because.
It makes no sense.
That makes zero sense.
They don't count the 17, 18 figures until all of the audits are completely done, and the state has figured out what our net per pupil cost is, which is not, our audits are not due until the January 31st, unless there's an extension. So then every state has to get it in, every district in the state.
Right.
Then they create that net per pupil cost that they use in the formula, so they're always current budget.
They're lagged a year.
But your enrollment is always lagging a year.
They're lagged a year, so you can't, you can't react appropriately to changing student population.
Which is why I tried using this year's part enrollment, and they would not.
That's pretty remarkable, huh?
And it's not, it's not unlike our reimbursement for special education, that doesn't come through until May. So it depends on how the legislature is doing, and that's why when we're budgeting for what we're going to be getting back from the state, we'll budget based in 75%, 80%, just depending on the year, and certainly given the fiscal issues going on at the state level. But we don't find out about that until the end of May, our budgets are through.
Yeah. So the formula's like a year late and a lot of dollars short?
Exactly.
That's the way it works out?
Exactly.
And they acknowledge those problems with it, but they have not done anything to correct it yet.
Got it, okay.
So the big question is the waiver, you know, and, and do we need the criteria for the waiver, and can we argue that?
And that's what our efforts are going to go through, our immediate efforts are gonna go to try to, try to put together an argument that, that we, we do. And if we don't, then maybe we need to, part of the waiver is expanding the requirements a little bit, to get us to where, to get them to understand that we do. And to understand that this is a trend that is not happening just in Deep River, this is happening around the state, and is affecting town after town after town. And it's time for them to either grant the wa, begin to grant waivers, or to change the law.
Are you aware of other towns having this issue?
Especially after, after last year, this hit a number of small towns just like us across the state that have declining enrollment. And I don't know whether you've heard anything from your CASBO group, but I have from superintendents.
What kind of group, was that a derogatory term?
It's the Business Managers Association for Schools. It's the Business Managers Association for Schools.
You're, you're all trying to see, uh, what the state considers an efficiency to, because they're not using the enrollment drop. And so far, nobody has had any luck in receiving a waiver based on any increased efficiencies.
See, and that's what I need to see, I have not yet gotten, and it may be in my computer or not, but I have not yet gotten a definition of efficiency. Because to me, it seems to me, if you are able to continue the classes and the, the education programs for a lesser amount, that's inefficiency. You know, if you can replace a retiring teacher with a younger teacher at a lesser salary, that's a, that's inefficiency.
Um, our preschool program that we share with Essex and Deep River is inefficiency for Deep River.
Regionalization, which they want us to do.
I love that.
No, that, that is actually was, that, I was told today that anything that we, any shared services.
Absolutely.
Would, would qualify for these efficiencies.
And that's what they want us to do, so that's what we're doing.
So we just need to put the argument together and, um, the, just finding out that we don't have to do this by January first is a, is a big, gives us an ability to do that. So, um, you know, I expect that we will and expect that our next meeting will have more answers and more of an idea of where the heck we're going. Uh, and if we need to, we'll have a special meeting in between, or I'll ask you to have a special meeting in between. I think that we certainly, if we, if the board of selectmen, if we need to, we'll certainly get together and do whatever we need to do.
And, um, you know, from our perspective, we want you to know that we are here to support and be as vocal, um, as you need us to be, as we can be, um, because we feel like this is something that's very, very important. You've supported us, we need to support you right now. And, um, you know, I, I have felt strongly about this issue from when Chester had this several years ago, I feel more strongly about it now, and I will advocate to have waivers at a minimum, um, and change the exemption pieces of this legislation, understanding what the, the cities and large towns need and understanding what we need. So, um, we will come back and speak with you whenever you have a meeting and we go into budget season, so it'll be a, a little bit of a challenge, but we will make it. Um, this is our third meeting tonight, so we're doing very well.
Or CCM or are any of those, because I can't think of what their schools.
The CAPS organization.
Or any of those, do they have any?
So, um, I will tell you that I, when I go to testify about this particular piece of legislation, I go as Ruth Levy Superintendent of this area because CAPS needs to support the larger districts, so they are actually supporting the other side. And where I testify on behalf of CAPS for other pieces, this one I'm standing alone.
Yeah, and I, I think COST will be our better advocate. CCM represents a lot, all of the larger towns, the larger cities. Not to say that they won't, they, they haven't, I don't know, I haven't spoken directly with them yet, but, uh, I, I think COST will be our better advocate for this.
Have you affected towns discussing getting together to go?
The state indicated to me, the state indicated to me that there were other communities, many more communities than ever have been affected by this, but they did not tell me who they were. So we're going to try to fill that out and, and I, obviously if we can all get together and do this, then.
You get together, you have some, you have some say and some power, because the big cities are gonna.
Yep.
You know, they run here.
And I'm hopeful that COST can help us with that, at least finding out who the heck else has been affected by this.
I mean, it's not, it's not, I mean, I'm just talking frustration, but we've all been through the same thing, I mean, we didn't take the money away from anybody. He said you didn't need it. So we said, oh, that's great. Now I turn around and say, oh, you took the money away from them and you can't do that, da, 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 I mean, that's just, that's all wrong. And you're trying to do your job and trying to do it right, and they're telling you, well, yeah, you're doing a good job over here, here's some more money because you need it. I don't need it.
I think the law is well-intentioned, I, I know the law is well-intentioned, I just think that it needs to evolve to reflect current conditions.
I, I can understand why they did it.
Yeah.
You know, because they're, historically, if you go back, you know, fifty, sixty, hundred years, whatever, I mean, schools were underfunded and people were not getting educated and, you know, well, we don't have the money, so forget it, they take away from the school. Well, that doesn't happen anymore. And that's, that's history. But we're still, they put these laws in and they don't change them.
It doesn't seem to behave well in a negative growth scenario.
No, no, because when you get.
Like, if you were growing, fine, right?
Fine, it'd be a non-issue.
You can rationalize it, no problem, right? You should have that, if not more, right? But, you know, with this, do we know the percentage of the decline as a percentage in the, in the student enrollment?
We've done eight percent over time, but that might be something that we should.
Yeah, that'd be something to consider for, for, as part of the, you know, our advocacy for the argument.
Truly, it, it comes down to provide us the exemption, provide us the waiver. If you would simply provide us the waiver based on data, then all is well.
And our test scores are up too.
The test scores are up, students are doing well.
You know, that is a critical.
Climate is excellent.
I think what you just said though is, is a critical argument. If, if we can go in there with data and argue this, we're going to have a much better opportu, opportunity to succeed than if we go in with the emotion.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you can't, when you say, feel sorry for us, you know, give us a waiver, that's not going to work.
So our data, we just have to put that data together.
If you're losing more than one and a half percent of the student population, then that, this law, you know, in effect is forcing the per capita student cost up artificially, you know, to be honest.
And that is the other issue of this, because yes, as, as enrollment goes down, per pupil cost goes up.
Yep.
So, so to your point, but you're absolutely right, it's, it's preciously close to being a vicious cycle.
Yeah. Well, I think it's right on that fence, it is right now, I think.
I mean, you could have, you could have a recurrent problem here after year, after year, with if the population continues to decline.
Which is why I think with this coming right now, I think it's our opportunity this year to be able to speak up.
Yeah. Yep. Well, we have to speak up. We're not going to just, okay, write a check.
It seems to make a lot of sense to, you know, put forward a rational argument why this, you should have a waiver because this is, does, makes no sense, so.
Lieutenant Chester solved the problem a couple of years ago without a waiver.
They put the money back into the budget, into the school budget.
And what did the school do with it? Give it back to Chester eventually?
Um.
Was it a savings plan?
It was, um, it wasn't, they, it was in fulfillment of the law. Um, they put it into the budget and then, um, Chester did have the surplus and the surplus went back to the town.
Maybe that solution is sort of, it just doesn't make any sense, but we'll give you what you said, but you're expecting to get it back to us, and it's an odd world.
Well, I think that, um, you know, keeping within the scope of the law, the expectation of it coming back would be anti what the law says.
Yeah.
But, you know, I, I mean, but as all of our towns have done in years past, when there's a surplus, it does come back to the town.
And it's just based on the appropriation, not the expansion.
Well, that, that was my opening on there, you're calculating appropriation, but yeah.
I don't think we can plan or count on, on that kind of a thing.
You would hope not.
Yeah.
Not.
Yeah, exactly.
You're kind of naming it, right? Whatever the next level effort came to is, I think it is. All right. So time will contribute to this solution?
You certainly will be kept up to speed with whatever, whatever actions we're taking. And, and, you know, I, I appreciate the cooperation, we certainly can make argument, but the, uh, the, the technical support from the schools is going to be critical to the argument. The data, they have all the data, I don't have data.
Yeah.
So, um, it'll be, I think it'll be a concerted and a cooperative effort to try to get this waiver. And, and barring that, to try to get the law changed.
That's the key.
And I think, I think getting the law changed.
That's the key.
Lends us, uh, really points us in the direction of cooperating with the other towns that are affected the same way. And even towns that were affected in the past like Chester.
Well, towns are affected, that are affected in the past, that are affect, in this loop that we're talking about at this point. And they're never going to get out of it.
Right. So I, I can only imagine that they're going to jump right on any kind of a hearing that we go and, and come up and tell their story. This is what happened to us, while we and our, and the other communities can say this is what is happening to us. And change is, change is necessary.
Did Chester grow out of my forecast to do?
Um, they're right about at level point. Now they are actually going to where Deep River was for the past five years, um, you know, where we were in that, that lower end. They have essentially bottomed out now that they're even and starting to go up a little bit. They're not in MBR jeopardy because their enrollment is starting to increase. But Essex will be there.
Yep.
Essex will be there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think this has, we have to keep in mind that the projections are what they are to drop, 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 and, and anybody that makes, that can make a forecast is going to see that the population, the state in this area is dropping. But it was only fifteen years ago that Westbrook built a whole new school based on projections that were going the other way, and that school's half empty now. So projections are only worth the paper that they're on, you can't put a whole lot of long, long range planning on it.
All right. But the good news is, nothing has to be done during that holiday.
Any action tonight, and that's, that's a big relief, I gotta tell you.
Holiday.
We were, I was ready to have to schedule a town meeting for, you know, two weeks from now to have to move this money back in, so this is, this gives us some breathing room. I can't say it's going to be a different result, but it does give us some breathing room.
On January first is my fuck wife.
That's right, that's why I was freaking out.
Somebody does have a, I'm just casually, there's a two character sword, take care of your children if you don't. Wow, that, uh, that stick is a pretty big one, isn't it?
And that's, that's an important thing to remember, that this is tied directly to our ECS funding.
Yes.
But you could actually be increasing the spend per student, and, but if you get a declining population, you're going to still fall under this rule.
That's correct.
You know, it doesn't make a heck of a lot of sense.
That's what we're doing.
There's some odd math.
Exactly.
Well, talking about the loop, if this money goes back into the budget, your starting budget is higher now, so.
Following that, that's the loop you get.
And your enrollment for last year is a lot higher, so you definitely.
Yeah, you get this bigger delta as you go along.
Right.
Which, again, makes no sense.
Yep.
And that's interesting. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just say one thing before I leave? Lori was phenomenal at teacher negotiations. Thank you, I mean, really, she represented not only Deep River, but all of us exceptionally well. You, you were asking so many pertinent questions that really led to an amicable solution and land, and I just wanted to publicly thank you.
Looking out for the town, but trying to make it work for everybody, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you both.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Who the hell do you vice chairman of?
I need a raise. Get zero, I want more zero.
Do, do we just finish talking about that?
A whole lot of nothing.
Yeah, bingo.
How long has this gone to your head now? Vice chairman, God, why don't you go to Phoenix and pick away at them? Lori will triple yourself.
I've gotten that a few times now, haven't gone anywhere for it.
Two times, zero. Angus is escorting folks out, so I assume that is the end of his recommendation.
Yeah.
We have no correspondence or, um, does any, let's go over the, the monthly budget report, there's a couple of interesting stories that.
Did you got my quick little notes?
I did, I did, I did. There's a couple, I'd say, interesting stories, things, nothing particularly, a couple of things who at least, on and off.
Oh, yes, there's that light, I'm going to bring up the book. Nothing will shadow.
And I wish Angus was here. I'll tell you what, we're going to, uh, and selectmen's, no, it's not selectmen, selectmen's, here's my suggested math, it is, uh, we should have about forty percent of our budget spent right now in November, so anything in the sixties sort of past is my threshold, or, uh, well, no, we should have about forty percent of our budget spent, sixty percent less, so I think we're, we're doing relatively well, if you use that frame of reference. Uh, and, and just pausing for a moment, you will see that register salary sort of falls short of that, spent a lot of money at the last election.
Yeah.
The gubernatorial election.
But we don't have a lot more for them to do.
No, no, that's for this year.
That's what I thought.
That is correct, and the only one they would have that I would anticipate is the school, which is a half day, so it seems like forty-five percent that they have left should cover that. Well, their part-time election salaries are thirty-one percent, but I think you're fine, I, I'm going there with tension. Town hall operations, again, seems fine, other than the sewer fee, and Angus is not here, I would like him to participate, I have an answer here because I have been asking, but I'll read Angus, and it is a bigger subject. As is true at the town hall, the, there's an interesting small number there that Angus, so here it is. Angus, I don't mean to not let you have your chair, we're commenting on or raising the question about sewer fees, why we're three thousand dollars over the four thousand budget.
That was, um, well, let's see if I can get to this succinctly as I can. We've been, there's, the fire department owns a building on Union Street, it's right next door to the, uh, to the fire, existing firehouse. That building, um, is on the tax rolls and needs to be, have its taxes paid, and it needs to have a sewer assessment, sewer fees paid. Um, we, that's what this line sewer fees is for, for the building, for all of the sewer buildings that are in the sewer. We haven't seen a tax bill. The ta, the fire department has never paid a tax bill on that, we had, so there's about three thousand dollars in change that came to us through the tax collector's office. So we've seen, we haven't addressed, um, and it got misf, we don't know where to put it, so Kathy put it here for now. We, we've got, there are taxes owed, the town's going to pay them, or the fire department's going to pay them, and if the fire department pays them, it comes through the town, rather than raise that, I think in this year's budget season, we will address this and put a line in there for it, but for right now, we needed to pay the bill, so we put it here. My, my immediate solution is going to be to ask the fire department to deed the property to the town, and this is, they're not doing anything with it, it's there to provide additional space for the fire, the firehouse expansion. It's, it's removal is part of the firehouse expansion plan. But the, the, the short answer to that is that that additional three thousand dollars was taxes on the building that were put in the sewer fees line because Kathy didn't know where else to put it.
Anyone have any comments on that? Thoughts? I guess my reaction's odd, odd to number the end. I guess my reaction's a bit odd, odd to the, the fire department decided to go into their own funds and buy the building. And they own the building. Fire department owns the building. They ran it in for a while and generated revenues. But they believe that the town should either exempt them from taxes, which has some appeal, or pay their taxes. It's a bit of an oddity, the town paying taxes to the town, but it just, it's just some, there's just a whole thing that's a bit odd.
No, I mean, they own, they own the building to create some revenue. The revenue should be used to pay taxes.
They actually not own the building to create revenue. They own the building to create space to, for the expansion of the firehouse.
That, that's now. Historically, when they first bought the building, that wasn't the intention.
Is that, is that real? I didn't understand that. That's.
That was the intention.
That was the intention when they bought it was for that. It was, it was turned into rental, I believe, because nothing was going forward with the plan. So during the time that it was a rental property, they owe the taxes. As soon as it became vacant, because the projects were going forward, if you will, and ready to be used for the town.
Okay.
Then it's no longer, then I can see taken, I begin off.
No, they're no longer making revenue on it.
Right, right, because it's now town use, if you will.
So they did pay the property taxes on it back then? Or did they never pay? I found no record of taxes that ever been paid on it, which is why this was as high as ours, right?
So even when they were making revenue, they were.
That's, that's what I, I, I don't have access to those numbers. I asked for them and I was told, no, there had never been any taxes paid on the property since, since the department owned it.
Seems like it should come off the tax rolls of its own.
That's what, well.
But it was used for commercial.
Yeah.
I think it all got skewed when they started renting the property.
Yes.
And, and we need to figure out how to, how to take that off again.
Yeah, until ownership of the property is finally determined, it's gotta stay where it is. We can't take over the tax rolls and then they say, okay, it's off the tax rolls, we're gonna run it out now.
That's, that's where I think we are.
Well, it's owned by the fire department, which is a.
With a fire commission?
Nope, no, they are not. They're a private 501(c)(3).
Not that they are.
The fire commission.
Okay.
Two separate groups.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the fire department's incorporated.
That's right.
Yes, that's right. They're their own entity, yeah. It doesn't mean we don't help them all the time.
Well, I think the.
The vast majority of their funding comes through here. They, they do have their own bank account and it has a good chunk of money in it.
And where did the funds, and that's a hard one to get an answer to, but the rental income, where did it go?
I assume it went back into their incorporation. I don't know the answer.
Right, I know that would be, you know, if it went into purchasing all the equipment, if it went into that.
I, I don't know.
Hard to say.
They probably got more than $3,000 in rental income.
They, they absolutely did. And, you know, for one reason or another, I think they had a bad experience with renting and decided that they didn't want to rent it anymore.
So anyhow, we're not going to change anything other than the question we ask every month, why is it over by three? It is reflective of the payment of taxes.
Yep.
Will you walk us down to the town clerk and answer why the vital statistics went up by?
Can't answer that. Amy was gone when I was in the office and I had to go to a CRAD meeting. And I was at CRAD, she, when I got back here, she was gone.
Angus denied it.
But I will answer that.
Okay.
Tomorrow morning, I'll send you an email.
Board of Finance, and totally off subject, just the word of the Board of Finance. Angus received a letter from the auditors recently, within the last year. If you remember, we had an isolated Jennifer Hawkins, who was the partner on the job. She has left my own institute. Her absence has created a vacuum, therefore they have not been able to come into town as they had planned earlier. They will not get in until this month and probably not finish the audit until early next month. So it is a little later than what they had promised us and we had discussed. Does going into January mean we have to file for, the, this, our town has been filing for an exception with the state for the last at least three years for sundry reasons. No one seems to be particularly stirred by it, but it'd be nice not to be a, an acceptor. How many waivers can we ask for in one year? But anyhow, so, so there is the news. There is no harm done, but we will not get it done when I, it should be done. Any, any other questions that anyone would like to chat about? Anything else? If you're on special services, I just draw it to your attention, why, and it is here to be drawn to your attention. There's the auditorium, which we, we create a new line item this year to be able to measure the cost of providing the auditorium to public facilities. If you look on the, so we spent in cost 1,200, I'm around, $1,300. Okay. If you look on the revenue side, we made about $800. So there's either a lag or there is, there's a generosity to the town, that the town does incur costs to set it up for, what's the word, tax exec, public agencies.
We, we do in fact, like the Rotary comes in and does their honor festival or some, something up there, we don't charge them for the police services, we don't charge them for, for, for the rental. That's, that's been a tradition that's been going on since, since the place was opened up. And that's where I think we're seeing that, that lag between, because there's, we still have the expense, but we are not, are not charging for it.
And I guess.
And that's really what this.
He's there to be had this conversation. We can learn.
That's why this line is there, so we can learn what we need to do and learn from it.
Put it in the budget planning coming up.
We may. There's talk, very preliminary talk about having a, a theater group move in and really kind of take over. But that's very, very preliminary. So it may, it may be very helpful.
On the revenue side of things, and I'm gonna see if I can wind this up so I can actually read it. I had two circles. The telecom property tax grant not received. Do you know when that one comes through?
Nope.
I think that's what Tommy has just indicated, because the pilot, what, the pilot in, what P, pilot stands for?
Paying the taxes.
Paying the taxes.
I don't believe that's the same.
That's not the telecom property tax grant.
Oh, okay, okay. Yes, that's an old one. Did we budget anything?
Yeah.
Yeah, we budgeted $8500.
$8500, and we have not gotten it yet.
Yep.
So 100% waiting.
And Devon, CCI Administrative Services.
They have not paid. We gotta chase them.
They have not paid.
We gotta chase them, I know. Once again.
Yeah, I think we have to chase them for that every year.
Yeah. It's like the newsletter is, the newsletter is behind as well.
Have we spent any of those?
Well, I'm looking at revenue. Nothing. And I know the newsletter comes out. Just got one reason we have that.
Well, revenue will be low because we are, we are an issue behind.
Okay.
We're short on issue this year. So the expenses should also be low.
Okay.
We have one more issue to come out, come out just after Christmas, though.
Light bills. Light number 352 was on during the day.
Light number 352?
Yeah, the pole. We were walking, we saw it, 352, the pole was on in the middle of the day. Why are you spending money?
I'll talk to 351.
I guess I did.
I don't know, it was on this weekend.
I don't think we get charged by killer watch, do we?
I don't know.
I thought we'd get charged by.
For the streetlights? Yes.
Just the pole.
But Laurie's is that they, greater social concern, we're misusing natural resources. I agree. We have a higher horizon to worry about.
And then.
Well, I, I, the summer program is virtually exhausted, and I assume that's because the summer is gone.
Well, I guess it is.
That's the only reason.
That's right. We, I think we spoke about this a couple of times or two. That, yeah, the programs are done and they won't start up again until after the next fiscal year.
And we have had a conversation that I wanted to bring in.
No, no, no.
Park and Rec talked about, we thought we sort of got pretty close to breaking even according to our numbers. And I'm assuming they, I'm assuming, but we will need to test it, whether they believe that they have, they are generating the savings plan that will be used by them in the future. But, well, I talked to Mary much, she hasn't gotten a chance to get here, so.
They wanted to, when I was at the workshops, that was one of the things we did discuss, that they want to come in and talk. So they'll be one of the ones invited to the workshop.
Certainly that, but I wanted to come in on a regular.
On a regular meeting, yeah.
Just started last year, absolutely.
Into January if you want.
All right. Any other questions on the budgets, both revenue and expenditures? Any new business that anyone would like to suggest, open up?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about the Economic Development Committee for just a moment. Having jumpstarted that one more time, at this time, we've identified some changes that we'd like to make to the, our page of the town's website. And they're fairly extensive. We're still working on finding out exactly what those charges might be to link to various places in the website, to change some copy, to put in some extra buttons, to make things a little more useful for outside entities. And I think my, what I'm trying to say is at some point, I want to be able to come back and say, we need X amount of dollars to be able to create something usable for economic development here in town. I don't think it's a ton of money, but it's worth talking about because, oh, let's say, just as a for instance, if we spend a couple thousand dollars, but we had somebody, had a business work come into town and open up shop, that would certainly pay for itself pretty quickly. And, and it's, if you look at the economic development page as we have in depth, there's some things that are older, there's some things that are outmoded and that need to be changed anyway. But consider this sort of that warning shot.
Well, I think Angus has been bringing this up and you have been nodding accordingly.
Yeah, interestingly enough, and I think we're gonna need to have some input from you as to what you guys, what the commission wants and needs, because the, the company that, I don't even know what the terminology is, that runs our website now, developed our website, is no longer supporting that, that, whatever the format is. So we have to spend some money and redo the whole of the website anyway. It's not, it's a website that apparently is unusable on a mobile app or telephone or whatever you want to call these computers everybody carries around. And they've decided they are simply not going to support it any longer. In, in fact, it will no longer be up after sometime in January, February. So we need to decide which format we want to go with. If we want to stay with the same company, and then they will update our website accordingly. I think that falls right into play with what the heck you're talking about, so we can maybe get that as part of this.
Sure, that would be great. We'd be happy to.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking, so.
Whomever, and, and get it all done at the same time. It makes great sense. And there are, there are other sort of what we used to call touch tunes back in the day when we were doing some programming on, on different companies. And there are things that you, you find and you don't realize are there, and they're so old that, you know, they're crumbling. And there's a lot of that type of thing on, on the Deep River site in general. So it's, it's a good idea to redo it. It's a good idea to be mobile friendly because that's how everybody looks sometimes. Very few people use a desktop to do that anymore. So it makes great sense.
Combining both stories, Angus, are you telling us or suggesting to us that you may be returning to this committee, asking for additional funds to do that? And this should be piggyback into it? Or is this something in next year's budget?
It's something that's going to have to happen in the next couple of months. Where the money comes from is where we're gonna try to figure it out. It might, it may come from the selectments, selectments budget. But I'll certainly let you know as it happens, since we're, if we, if we need to go through.
That was my question playing for Russell, was the request for funds in next year's budget or in this year's budget? Angus is gonna tell you it's in this year's, right?
That would be in this year's budget. Whatever we do, if we need additional funds for economic development, that will be in this year's budget for direct things. Next year's budget, we will have a, an Ida, a number that they will come to us and say, this is what we are entitled to by, by the ordinance that created us. This is what we want. Whether those two numbers are the same or not, I don't know.
We're stepping carefully this year because there's nothing in the budget.
Right.
Because we didn't get the EDC together in time to be in this budget. So anything that we need to spend, we need to come and ask for, and it's above and beyond whatever is in here. So we're being extremely careful.
Careful's always good, isn't it?
I think respectful of the, of the process is better way to, is how I would describe it. We're not, we're just not coming and saying we need, we're entitled to this money, give it to us. We're gonna spend it as we need to, but that's all.
All right. Any additional information, comments? Hearing none, but have a motion for adjournment?
No move.
To move.
Second.
On paper.
Aye, aye.
Thank you, everyone.